All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 26th City Council meeting. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pelavonaglu.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
There are eight members present in quorum. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, at this time, do we have any council members that would like somebody remembered at this time? Councilman Brown.
Thank you. If Councilwoman Carter could assist me with this, with Tabernacle David and the Trice family, please.
Thank you. Yes, just again to continue to remember Emeritus Pastor Angelina Lois Trice. We had her recent homegoing on Saturday, but she was a pillar in our community. She has attributed to the LMTS Community Outreach Center and that groundbreaking. So again, continue to keep the family in your thoughts.
All right, thank you. All right, any other? All right, with that, we'll take a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
You have for your approval the proceedings of February 12th.
Vice President Hussein.
I would move the proceedings as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those polled, same sign? All right, motion passes.
We are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Any council comments? All right, seeing none. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. I will keep it brief, but tomorrow is Election Day here, the presidential primary in the state of Michigan. So if you wish to vote, polling places open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. If you need to register to vote, we do have same-day registration here. So you can come to 1221 Rio Road or here at City Hall and register. And when you register on Election Day, you have the choice of voting an absentee ballot right there or going to your precincts where you will regularly vote. And then I also want to mention that we have a couple thousand voters who have been issued absentee ballots that we have not received back yet. We do have to have those by 8 o'clock p.m. So we can accept those at any drop box or at our, either of those two offices that I mentioned earlier up until 8 o'clock p.m. It is too late to put them in the postal mail, though, so please do not do that. And with that, we are to community.
Point of privilege, sorry, Clerkswoop. Just real quick, I forgot to mention, Rejuvenating South Lansing is tomorrow evening at 6:30 p.m. at the Alfred Schmitz Center. It's in the Sandy Allen Room, so that is Tuesday, February 27th, tomorrow at 6:30 p.m. And the guest speaker will be our Chief Sosby from the Lansing Police Department. Thank you.
All right, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, you have one minute to tell us the details.
I'm Norma Bauer, and the, on March 22nd, the Michigan Justice Advocacy for a Signature Gathering event, there's going to be special guest speakers, including Emily Devendorf, Senate candidate Harper Hill, City Councilmember Ryan Cost, Lois Polano of Citizens for Prison Reform, State Appellate Defender Office, and Jack Wagner of Michigan Justice Advocacy. It's going to be at the Fledge, starting at 5:00. So I hope a lot of people will go because they do a lot of good work and will hear a lot of good things.
Thank you. Anyone else with a community event announcement?
Good evening. You've had a long night, so thanks for the time. My name is Emily Palmer, and I am a pastor's wife. My husband is the pastor of Christ Community Church right off of Capitol and Ionia, and we have opened a comedy club in the basement of our church and invited our community to come in and participate to have a nice, things are so serious in the world today, and so we're trying to have a nice place that we invite the community in to do that. So on Saturday at 7:00, we are hosting our first A Lot More fundraiser for Jubilee and looking forward to be able to celebrate the wonderful things that are going on with that organization and be able to provide all the proceeds to the organization. And so we would like to invite you, everyone, to show, to join us. We've got Bill Baranke, he's a national touring headliner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community event announcements? All right, then we are to the mayor's comment. Actually, first, let me announce that if you wish to address the City Council during legislative matters, you do need to sign in with the blue form in the back with tag. We'll give you about another minute to sign in, and things that can be discussed are items 2 through 14 on the printed agenda.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few quick things, I know it's getting late. First, I want to make sure all the residents saw that FEMA has approved expenses for the storm a few months ago, so individuals can apply. We have the information in our newsletter that goes out weekly. If you have any questions, call my office. On the flip side of that, I need to report to council that communities in Michigan were denied funding from FEMA. We just got the letter late last week. We were hoping for an appeal, but it seems that we had significant losses of about $10 million, but the state as a whole has to have upwards of $18 million, and FEMA determined that that was not the case. We have appealed and argued to the highest levels, and they have indicated that we are not receiving reimbursement for those funds, so we're looking for alternatives. We're, I'm talking to the state, I'm talking to, see if there are other avenues, the federal government, Congresswoman Slotkin has been very helpful. So we're going to keep fighting for reimbursement for those dollars that we spent for our citizens. So that's disappointing. But if you're a citizen of the city of Lansing and you had storm damage and spent anything, you are eligible, so please apply. This Saturday, we have our Public Services Seasonal Job Fair at O&amp;M. If you want to be a seasonal employee, you can apply, you can interview, you can test, you can do your background check, you can get your skills test, all of that, all at one time, Saturday, starting at 8:00 a.m. at our operations and maintenance office on South Street for a seasonal job for the city of Lansing. It's a great entry into the city. We take a lot of folks from seasonal to full-time, so hopefully folks will come and take advantage of that opportunity. And finally, I want to thank everybody. I know several councilmembers who showed up for our HRCS event dealing with kind of future options for our warming center and assisting those of need. Really good conversation. Thank you to all the advocates that were there, all of the interested parties. We're excited to see how that plays out in the future, along with the RFP and other things that we have for operations. So thank you all for being there. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mayor Shore. Did you have something, Mr. Lawrence?
I just wanted to quickly confirm, Mayor, we, I, being out last week, I may be a little behind on this, but I believe you can't, you can't have filed an insurance claim and get reimbursement from FEMA for storm damage.
Yeah, thank you. So get, go to my, go to our website, we're going to put the information up on the website. It's a, it's a federal declaration, but that's a good clarification. So we'll get that information up on the website. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Shore. And just once, one, one thing that just popped in my head when, when you mentioned O&amp;M, I had, I just wanted you to bring this to your radar, I'm going to call Andy Kilpatrick tomorrow, I didn't think it was appropriate to talk to him when he was down here presenting earlier, but our CART. So a couple constituents reached out to me trying to get ahold of CART about their City Lansing garbage collection, and they're not able to get through to CART. In the morning, afternoon, nighttime, doesn't matter, they're getting transferred to O&amp;M, and then it's just a revolving cycle of automated, they can't speak with anybody.
Do you know if they called 311?
I do not know if they called 311, but typically, when you call 311, they transfer you to CART. And if that's the case, it's, they're not getting anybody answering at the CART.
I will, I'll find out. I know our 311 are getting trained up in different departments. I talked to Delisa about it today, I thought that was on the list. I will figure out where the 311 training is, but we'll check and see what the status is with CART answering the phones.
All right, thank you. Feel free to send them to me, too, and I'll get them connected up.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that includes items 2 through 14 on the agenda. Item 2 is a public hearing for Brownfield Plan Number 77, the 500-block redevelopment project amendment number one.
Sorry, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so on the public hearing, just very quickly, the city of Lansing is, we know that we're, you know, kind of situating ourselves to construct, finance, and own Phase 2 of the subject redevelopment project for 501 South Capitol Avenue, 110 West Hillsdale Street, and 520 South Washington Avenue. So that has precipitated a proposed amendment to Brownfield Plan 77. That was originally adopted back in late 2019, I think it was December of 2019. That plan had originally contemplated two parcels at Capitol and Lenoie. Plan is being amended essentially to now include three parcels. Purpose, as explained at our last meeting, is threefold. One, to document reconfiguration of the two original parcels, which now contain three parcels, outline the proposed development, add an associated eligible cost at 520 South Washington Avenue. Two, to update proposed eligible activity costs based on current redevelopment plans at all three parcels within the property, and three to adjust the proposed tax increment revenue capture schedule based on the current project timeline. Project does contemplate now two phases. Phase 1 is mostly complete, so Phase 1 was in the original plan. Two buildings, Building 1 at 501 South Capitol Office, building renovation into a mixed-use building of office, commercial, and five floors of residential with an estimated 55 multifamily residential apartments that, if I recall correctly, is expected to be done by March of this year. And then Building 2 at 110 West Hillsdale Street is actually new, newly constructed, mixed-use building along South Capitol Avenue and West Hillsdale Street with an estimated 170 multifamily residential apartments. And then there is some commercial space as well. Phase 2 is essentially what the amendment contemplates. This is a third building on the property, it would be developed to include the construction of a new two-story performing arts building. Total, let's see, total includes, or final development includes a green room, performance stage, first-story bar, rooftop bar, patio seating, recording studio in the basement, and the list goes on. The, in terms of some of the changes, there is a lengthening essentially of the duration of the plan. Talked a little bit about how we got here, property being purchased last year. Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority did approve 500. In terms of the amendment, there were four folks absent when this was vetted. So again, we are simply here for the public hearing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, our first speaker this evening is Cameron Nass, followed by Craig Terrell. And speakers have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, I am Cameron Ganas, and I'm a business owner and have been for 25 years downtown Lansing on Michigan Avenue. And over those years, I've helped co-create and produce several events and cultural attractions that take place in downtown Lansing, none of which would nearly have the impact, the transformational effect as a destination like the Ovation. And I've seen firsthand in many communities around the country, I've had the fortune of exploring how arts and cultural hubs like this can have a positive impact year round, more so than just sports facilities like Lansing invested in for the Lugnuts almost 30 years ago. It's important to applaud the commitment you've made so far to building a space, but I think it's important to note as well, it's not just having a venue, it's having the right venue. When we researched the world to find comparable facilities to what we built with Beacon Soccer Field, it's safe to say that the only ones that we found were the inspiring ones originally from, that FIFA had built themselves in South Africa as part of the World Cup. Our local community came together to build a world-class facility that makes the participants feel valued with the quality of the materials and the amenities that was used to construct it. As a testament to that, now in its 10th year, it's still as busy now as it was at the very first opening night. My hope is that your support will shepherd something to be built that is emblematic of where we want Lansing to be, not where residents seem to think we are now. Let's not have another pole barn on the river moment. And instead, let's build a new beacon to draw people to our community and make those that live here feel like we value them, improve our commitment to arts and culture in the boldest way possible. More and more studies show that engaging in the arts, social activities, and interaction within our communities can help with a major, can help with major challenges such as aging and loneliness. It can help boost confidence and make us feel more engaged and resilient. Besides these benefits, arts engagements also alleviates anxiety, depression, and stress. With a new home for the LPMC, the Ovation won't sit dark without tickets, without ticketed events, as they will also provide super affordable access to media, literacy, and the arts. The opportunity to do even more will be a major boon to our downtown. Lansing deserves to have a bright, fully functional cultural epicenter in our capital city, one befitting of a capital city. I hope you approve the Brownfield Plan 77 amendment number one. I'm going to close by saying, you know, Maya Angelou has a famous quote saying, "People might forget what you said and what you did, they'll never forget how you made them feel." And I think it's time for us to make our current residents and the visitors that come to make this a destination feel like we care about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Craig Terrell, followed by Malik Brown.
Hi, everybody. My name is Craig Terrell. I am a human person. I also run Lansing Facts with my friends. Smarter and more eloquent people are going to come up and talk about the Ovation, they're back there. Hi. I just want to encourage you to do it. The old gods are dead, right? The days of the Jetsons downtown where state workers zip in, go underground, zip out on roads that are way too wide, those aren't coming back. They never came, they never came around in the first place. To build a city that thrives, you need civic infrastructure, you need cultural infrastructure. Now, I know I'm an idiot online, well, I'm an idiot in person, but one thing I do know is I worked for a municipality in the DC region that put a lot of energy into upgrading its cultural capital and city capital, and it did wonders. It was transformative to the city. And, you know, I make Lansing my home, and I want to see it thrive. I want to see it thrive like you guys do. Do it. Spend the money. Make something that we can be proud of. I have a bunch of notes on my phone, I'm going to ignore them. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Malik Brown, followed by Emma Selby.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time. I'm going to steal something from Cameron Ganas's opening statements, longtime resident of Lansing, homeowner, shop owner, and also someone who has created events in this space of Lansing for people to enjoy this space and see the greatness that Lansing has to offer and its resources that it has here already. As you can see, I pretty much wear something with Lansing on it on the daily and open up a shop to do that. It's been a long thought of mine and discussion with other people about how often Michigan itself and including Lansing would be a flyover place, in the sense that fashion, people, arts, entertainment kind of skips underneath Lansing and does, or Michigan. But if we build something that can bring something here and bring an opportunity for us to capture some of the stuff that's going by us, then we can help enhance what we're already doing for our community, for our people, as well as providing an opportunity where people can see the potential of what they could do. There is a lot of talent in Lansing, a lot of talent in Lansing. And to be able to have a space like the Ovation where talent can come in, be accessible, be affordable, and then also a space where the community can utilize that as well, why not make it be the best that it could be? So if this brownfield abatement, right, helps make that be the best that it can be, there's no reason to be mediocre, right? The money's already been allotted for the basic building, right? And from what I understand, if this happens, this gets approved, the brownfield gets approved by you, it's going to be the best, what has been decided upon by other investors. If you don't pass it, it possibly won't be the best, and some of the investors might say, hey, you're not doing what you said you were going to do. So I guess it kind of holds on you guys to make sure that we are putting our best foot forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Emma Selby, followed by Joshua Pugh.
Hello, council. I am somebody who is a lifelong resident of the Lansing area, and my husband and I never thought we would stay here, but then we fell more and more in love with the community, and now we are homeowners and dedicated Lansing residents. And every week, as we sit around and we try to figure out what we're going to do, how we're going to spend the precious hours of our weekend when we're both done with our jobs, we find ourselves often in Grand Rapids, Detroit, and Ann Arbor, not staying in Lansing. We love live music. We love live comedy. We love performances and art of all kinds, and we're constantly seeking that out. And we know that we have talented people here in Lansing. We know from our friends, from our family, from the people we work with, how many incredible voices there are here in Lansing. But we don't see that translated in the actual events and things that are going on here in the city that we love so much. And so we end up spending our time and our money in other cities instead of in our home city that we adore and that we want to be building back into. We want to spend our money, we want our friends to come here instead of us going to Grand Rapids, Detroit, Ann Arbor, these other cities every weekend to go spend time with our friends there, hit up a show, and then go out to dinner, enjoy life there. We want our friends to want to come to Lansing and do the same thing, and the Ovation would give us a proper venue for that, for touring acts, for even local acts, to have that sort of facility, to be able to have that entertainment, that performance, that art here in our city. And like Malik, I've been organizing events in the Lansing area for a long time. I'm a business owner, I'm an event planner, I'm a venue manager, and so I know how much we need more venues here in Lansing. Every single week, I'm talking with people at the venue that I manage about how much there is a lack of different diverse venues of size for different events, whether that's performing arts, whether it's private parties, whether it's galas, whether it's, whatever it is, for people to come and gather together. There's a desire for that in Lansing, and every week I'm hearing from people how they just can't find it here. And if this amendment is approved, then we'd be able, like Malik said, to have broader funding to make it the best it can be and make Lansing a destination for people all across the state and for the people who live here who are looking for a destination weekend and they could find that right here in their hometown. And for all of our people who are event organizers, who want to make a change in the city, who want to show off arts, having a place like that to do it here in the city would be invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joshua Pugh, followed by Tina.
Thank you for the time tonight. I'm here tonight as a downtown neighbor who strongly supports the vision for the Ovation Center for Music and Arts. I want to encourage council to support the full version of this plan with the full scope of amenities, as others have said. This proposal came out of years of local engagement work and obviously has the scope, the support of the arts community, of nearby businesses, and of our downtown neighbors. I'm asking you to believe in the future of what this community can be. My wife and I have lived here for over a decade, and we have seen years of doubts and naysaying about Lansing in our downtown, which persists today, where we chose to buy our first home. We've seen multiple new downtown apartment buildings priced for all income levels open in the last few years, each of them at or near capacity. One of the challenges facing every city in Michigan right now is how we can build housing and other welcoming spaces in our built environment. These, these spaces existed a long time ago, they weren't built to be welcoming for people, and now we have to sit and think, what do we do to rebuild and remake them into, into a town like Craig said, that, that we can make for the people who live here, the people that want to be here? The former Lake Trust Building is not the only functionally obsolete building in a downtown area in Michigan. And this proposed Brownfield redevelopment plan gives us an opportunity to reactivate our downtown with dense infill development, a diverse set of businesses, bring residents, visitors, and workers all downtown more, especially on weekends and into the evenings. Research shows that these brownfield structures are good for the environment, they generate new local revenues, and they drive growth in a responsible fashion. So let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tina, followed by Norma Bauer.
Good evening, council. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I'm in support of the Ovation. I am a, I want to mirror what the first speaker said, Cam. This would be good for self-esteem for the city. I'm a veteran, served overseas, and have been able to have relation with the people who are getting this ovation going, and I just want to say that I'm in support of it and that I think it will be very beneficial for the city and for the self-esteem of the city as a whole. And that's really all I have to say, I'm just in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Norma Bauer.
Okay, so I have to talk fast because I've got five items I want to comment on. The public hearing on noise abatements, I hope you realize that it's really hard for third shift workers to sleep when all day long these big heavy equipments are coming through, rolling through, and making noise. And also the kids who are going to school who need a good night's sleep so they can perform well the next day. So if you do decide to go ahead with that, please put a time limit on it. I know you care about economic development and fixing things and remediating brownfields and whatever the plans were for those places, but just consider the people who live in the neighborhoods. And on the show cause hearings, I just want to appreciate all of you who do the committee work. And if people went to Rejuvenating South Lansing, then they would learn about committees, and they could attend, you know, because that's how democracy works, you show up. And... And Public Safety Committee and Ryan Cost have done a marvelous job on the Public Safety Committee. Because when the Lansing Economic Development Corporation didn't even respond to respectful requests from a citizen, in his case, a citizen who's a member of the City Council and in charge of things, you know, that's really not respectful, and that's not transparent, and that's not responsive, and that's not okay. So thank you very much, Ryan, and I know you do a lot of other things for everybody in every ward in the city, even though that's not part of your job description, but it's wonderful. On the grant acceptance thing, which has been tabled, I guess, or going to be. I mean, I listened to that guy drone on and caused this meeting to start an hour late, and that's not respectful at all. And he seems to forget that the purpose of this kind of transformational housing is so that we'll have walkable communities. Anybody remember that? Walkable? You know, so they can patronize the businesses downtown? I think that's what it's about. That's kind of economic development. What he's dealing with is what we call a wicked problem. There's so many variables. You can't predict. What if the Russians send up a drone up to, or the Chinese or somebody, up to one of our geosynchronous telecommunications satellites? What are we going to do? You know, so, you know, you can't solve a wicked problem. You have to deal with what is in the present moment. You have to learn from it. And when you're making five-year plans, they get out of date really, really quick. So just don't, don't go with what he was recommending. It was just, it's not going to work. That's my opinion.
Thank you. We also have a written communication from Mitch Rice regarding Brownfield Plan Number 77, and we are to the referral of the public hearing, which is Brownfield Plan Number 77.
All right. Thank you. That will be referred to Development and Planning this Wednesday, February 28.
Okay, and we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Hussein.
All right. So we have, on the consent agenda tonight, we do have a resolution to tribute in memory of Angelene Lois Price. We have a resolution of reappointment for Stephen Young as an at-large member of the Elected Officers Compensation Commission for a term to expire October 1st, 2030. We have a resolution that pertains to polling places and the temporary relocation of multiple precincts for the May special election. We have a resolution that pertains to a liquor license for a new Class C development district or area liquor license, a request from McCotta Club LLC at 300 South Washington Square. We also have a resolution to set a public hearing on the noise special permit for Hoffman Brothers, Inc. to allow for combined sewer overflow 1617 Phase 2 project. We have a resolution to set a public hearing on a noise special permit, this one for the Michigan Department of Transportation, request to allow for work activities to take place on I-496 and US 127. We have a resolution to accept the transportation asset management plan, so that can be submitted to the state. We also have a resolution to set a show cause hearing on orders to make safer demolish to the owners of 1326 North Genuson Avenue. We have another resolution to set a show cause hearing on orders to make safer demolish to the owners of 1519 Level Street. That, I would move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do you have any questions or concerns? All right, seeing no questions or concerns, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
We are to resolutions for action.
Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, so as it pertains to 12 and 13, we've had a lot of conversation on this, obviously. City Attorney, I think, did a great job as part of committee of the whole as to why we need to table these and why we are taking a look at new resolutions of acceptance and appropriation in regards to transformational affordable housing as well as municipal infrastructure. So with that, and I'll move them respectively, I'm going to move to place on file, not table. Sorry, place on file, grant acceptance for transformational affordable housing projects.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Vice President Hussein.
Yep, and as it pertains to 13, same thing, so I'm going to move that we place on file, the resolution dealing with the grant acceptance for transformational municipal infrastructure.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
And item 14 is the council rules amendment.
All right, Councilman Spatafor.
All right, I think I have to move to take these off. Nope, no, we're good. So no table, no untabling. We're good? All right. I'm just going to address them then because we do have two new members of council since these were last in front of us. These are rules to add Rule 48 to City Council rules related to electronic participation in public comment at meetings of City Council and committees. This would set up a process by which members of the public could register to electronically speak to council and committee of the whole by registering through a request with the city clerk no later than four hours to, before the meeting, in a form and manner determined by the city clerk. So that would be however the clerk thinks is best to communicate with his staff to make sure that we do not miss anyone who wishes to speak. For City Council committees other than Cow, the process is determined by council staff, which would include posting the link to participate on agendas. So there would be no registration period for our general committees, rather just the two larger one meetings that take place in this chamber. It is my understanding, through meetings I had last year and meetings that you all have had this year, that leadership and our clerk's office and our staff have worked out the processes for how that's going to work to make sure we can get Zoom or Teams participants on the screens communicating with us, and they can see us. And then same goes for in the back room where we have committee meetings. I am not going to speak to budget meetings in the public and things like that, but certainly the things that take place in this building, we know how that will, how that will work. So that is it. It would still allow for the rules of decorum under Rule 18. So if there is, like we had during the pandemic, some of the Zoom bombing that took place, the presiding officer or the clerk could have the ability to mute and remove the participant from continuing that public comment for that particular meeting if they disrupt. We did go through a lot of comment with members at this table and threw input on it and came up with this four hours as kind of a way to test the waters to see if that was functional for the city clerk's office and our office staff to make sure that they weren't spending every minute leading up to a council meeting, monitoring that, but it did allow for the public some time between when the agendas were posted and when closing happened. It's no different than the closing that happens during these meetings that allows for us to close that list off. There is an opportunity to revisit these, as always with any rules, if we decide that they are too stringent or not stringent enough. But this gives us a chance to make good on the promise we made in last year's budget to get that open access to individuals who can't make it down to this building. So I don't need to move because I've been reminded I already did that.
All right. And I just want to add to that. We should be going live March 11th with that and continuing on after that for committee of the whole and our council meetings. So look for that option, March 11th. Okay, and with that, there's, did you make a motion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Any questions or concerns? Councilman Jackson.
Just one. I appreciate the opportunity to review in the future. My understanding is that there was going to be like, you know, in six months, I thought it was, there will be a review instead of that we could review it just to see how the testing of the waters and everything is going.
We had talked about doing that in the committee, but it's not in the, and it's actually a committee that you chair now, so you can, you can take that up. But it's not written in the rules, no.
Okay, well, for the record, we'll be reviewing it in six months. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Okay, we do have a motion. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. You can speak on any item related to the governance of, operation of the city. We'll be closing that out in about 30 seconds. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Hussein.
I would move that all items be considered as being read in full. The appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
We got a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have from the city clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
And board and commission term expirations. And I would note that there was a corrected version put on the website and given to council members earlier today.
Place on file.
From Mayor, Workers' Compensation Claim Settlement.
Ways and Means Internal Auditor.
And two items relative to the Community Development Lot Grant Annual Action Plan.
Committee of the Whole and Internal Auditor.
The appointment of Samantha Harkins to the Potter Park Zoo Board.
Development and Planning.
And a grant acceptance, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant for Francis River Lot Deck Improvements.
Ways and Means Internal Auditor.
Communications and Petitions, a communication from Charlie Tidwell on various city matters.
Place on file.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Any additional remarks by council members? Seeing none.
Okay, remarks by the mayor.
No remarks by the mayor.
Okay, then we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Kim Lambright, followed by Alexis Jones. And speakers have up to three minutes to address counsel.
Good evening. My name is Kim Lambright. I live at 206 East Hodge Avenue in Lansing. It's the street that in 12 years has seen a plow truck maybe five times. One of those times was to get an ambulance unstuck that was using Hodge to get through when Stabler was being fixed. How come East Hodge is full of potholes? They come, they throw a little bit of tar in it and leave, and there's a big hole right next to it, but they'll just fill one here, fill one there, instead of filling them all and getting it taken care of. And then you call back in a week and get the same thing done. Just question of how come it happens that way? That was number one. Number two, what are we doing as a city council about the legalized prostitution? The massage parlors around Lansing saw an article that I read just the other day that said, "We are doing nothing because they're off the streets." And the community wasn't complaining. Well, now we are. And yes, we have been. Talked to a state rep back in 2016. We complained to him, and they said, "Well, this is the oldest profession around." Well, so is gunslinging. Are we going to start shooting each other when we get upset with each other? Or what's the reasoning? Because it's, show me the money? How much money are massage parlors bringing in for the city? Okay, number three, all the pot joints, pardon the pun. How come we have them at every corner? We have, my terms, skunk on every street, smokers on every road, no matter where you go, except leading to the Capitol. You don't want to have bookstores, massage parlors, leading to the Capitol, so you push them into the community. Now they're in my neighborhood. I've been here over 60 years. I don't want them. Help us out. You guys were hired by us, the people. We want them out, too. Seems like we are on the same agenda as our president of destroying our city and our state. You want to cut down on crime and okay all kinds of evil. And then become a sanctuary state to invite all the illegal immigrants into our state thinking that it won't bring crime. Now Gretchen Whitmer wants us to all invite them into our homes. Not going to happen. I'm here because my God told me to bring this to your attention. You will be held accountable for what you do with it. The end of this world is not very far away. I'm sure you've all heard it. You hear it on TV all the time. And this can be illustrated by a man going on a long trip. And I want to explain that in Mark 13, 34 through 37. "The coming of the Son of Man can be illustrated by the story of a man going on a long trip. When he left home, he gave each of his workers instructions about the work they were to do. He told the gatekeeper to watch for his return. You two must keep watch, for you don't know when the master of the house will return, in the evening, at midnight, before dawn, or at daybreak. Don't let him find you sleeping. When he arrives without warning, I say to you what I say to everyone: Watch for him." All right, my, that's what I'm doing. I'm doing what I feel I need to do. This is my city. This is my state. I don't want to see us keep going down the road we're going. We're okaying everything. Pretty soon, you guys won't have a job. There'll be no reason to have you try to keep crime down, try to take care of things, because everything will be okay. Everything's all right. Don't be caught sleeping. We are all created for something. His work, what's yours? Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Alexis Jones, followed by David Vashaw.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Jones. I live at 226 Warrington in Lansing. I'm a business owner. I'm just here to let you know I submitted a proposal to all the council member and also to the mayor on the issue of the graveside memorials that's all over the town. They are in every ward here in the city. The, they, I, in my everyday travels, I see these memorials, and they are accumulating here in the city. We have, I have a business. We come to you, event planner. We have a plan for helping the city do something with these memorials in a creative way. I know it's a sensitive area. We think we have a plan. We come to you, believe that we have a plan for the city to, you know, combat these roadside memorials. I'm sure we all seen them. They're all over the town. I, some of you received a list of maybe 20-something, just on maybe two or three roads here in town. They are on fire hydrants. They are on bike trails. I mean, I can go on. So I'm just here just to let you guys know. You guys all received a proposal, and you also received a follow-up letter. Here's the guy, Alex Jones. So I'm looking forward to hearing from you guys. This is a great city. I'm here, the city is, this is the capital city. This is a flagship city of Michigan. And I'm proud, I'm proud to be part of it. So I'll leave it at that, and hopefully I hear from you guys soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Vashaw, followed by David Ellis.
I guess, last few weeks I've been addressing council regarding homelessness and the situation we're facing out there. I heard somebody mention earlier tonight the Lutz Center, that they recently opened up. It has helped a lot with a lot of us that are able to get there. Other people that are less mobile than me still are stuck out in the outerlying. Other people that are less mobile than me still are stuck out in the outer lying areas that can't get to where that's at. I heard him mention something about, when they opened it up, they had allowed for everything except that that place is rented. So when there are things like elections, we can't stay there tonight. Everybody, the 30 people that had been staying there have no place. Somebody brought to our attention that there had been 5 million allotted to buy a church of some sort for the new city hall. But the only thing that's been allowed for the homeless is like, I think 250,000, which is one-third of what they were putting towards the city hall. I'm sure they could do something as far as a new shelter with just a portion of that. And I mean, for the short term, does somebody come up with an idea when they have something they can't let the people be there at the Letts? There has to be some other opportunity or they're just stuck out in the cold again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Ellis followed by Joe Salazar.
Hello, council. David Ellis, resident of downtown. I was initially planning on coming and speaking about Lansing police and how they seem to have multiple instances of miscategorizing car on pedestrian accidents, but actually some news has come to light that since it's made public, I want to comment on and have a little bit of a positive, a positive evening. Just want to very quickly talk about the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard redesign, where they're removing the islands along that. I could talk about this extensively, but long, the long and short of it is this redevelopment, they are taking the islands out from between Ionia and Lenoir Streets. Looking at it, everything about this is positive. It is bringing, it is narrowing the road, it is making it safer for pedestrians to cross, it is helping contribute to lower speeds, it is opening up acres of land for potential redevelopment. It is, it's moving all of the green space that is sort of trapped between two 45 mile per hour one ways onto the side of the road where it can actually be enjoyed by people instead of being filled with trash and debris from car accidents. This is a project that I am incredibly, incredibly excited to see finally happening. This is what I have been pushing for almost every meeting I come and speak about things related to this. So whoever in public service is responsible for this, please give them a pat on the back for me because this is, this is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Joe Salazar followed by Mike Lynn.
This all happened in Morris Park where, before the, before, in front of the dam there. There's something here that I'd never seen before. What happened, they had a buoy across the river and it caught everything, you know, like all these, all that trash, everything you can throw, everybody throws away in their trash can, right there it was. And this one here is, you know, like this, this, it also stunk really bad, you know, Morris Park there. And what it was is a bunch of dead animals, birds, fish, anything you can think of, all kinds of waste of animals, pets, I mean, pets. And they, it just looks, made me sick just looking at it because there's all this, all this stuff here that, excuse me. See, where's the love? What I'm saying is, all this, all this trash, all this pollution is going into the great lakes and we're leaving this for our great, great grandchildren. And they're the ones that are going to have to deal with all this trash here and, and all this, all the water, you know, getting polluted. So I, so I thought about it and I came up with about five ideas how we can move, remove us out of the water. So here's a little sketch here. And I, I think it's, we should start doing something about the having clean water and stuff, you know. So I, like I said, that's all I want to let you know, like there's something, something right there was, or, but the thing is, I'm glad they did it because now we, now, it's something you don't get to see, how much trash is going in there, when you, and it's, it's going there every day. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mike Lynn and then Tiersten Walters.
So interesting when people come here to engage with y'all. That's amazing what you just showed because I live downtown and like when you drive over the bridge, like going down Chiawasi, I believe it is, west, the smell of the river is terrible because it's in between two dams. And this stuff just gets piled up in there. I always, I never thought about till you just showed those, like what do we do as a city about our river? Do we clean it? Do we do anything in it? I remember when I was working for the fire department, we used to do our swift water rescue in that river and it was always something that was on the schedule and we'd, we'd be hurting about that because we got to get in that stuff, right? So it's just terribly nasty. But outside of that, I appreciate that, man. I wish you guys really could have conversation about that, maybe in public safety, or maybe there's something y'all are doing. But I did come up to talk about, and I just want to say first of all, like, I'm really proud of this council, even the new people, right? Because the due diligence y'all are putting into stuff, man. I can remember being here for the last four or five years, just rubber stamps, rubber stamps, rubber stamps. And if something this big came and had already like been rubber stamped by the state and Sarah Anthony and all the big names, it would have been real quick. There wouldn't have been no conversation, you know, and I think the questions you guys are asking and getting answers to, and again, we're not against it. I think that it's like the, the stuff they showed us was amazing. I mean, I'm somebody who can afford that. So I mean, me and my wife are sitting back to thinking like, dang, it would be nice to have an indoor pool as opposed to what we have now, you know? Maybe it's time for us to spoil ourselves a little bit, but it's got to be the right way, right? So I always say like, we can't get to a good place in a bad way. And I think that you guys understand that when I come up here and speak, that's what I'm talking about. It's not really the end game, it's not really what the end result is, because if we get there bad, or we overlook certain individuals along that process, everything that I do, I try to, I try to really be intentional about focusing on the most marginalized people in the community. And that's just not me sometimes, even though I'm a black man living in this community, a lot of times it's somebody that's got way worse than me and I have to really focus on them first before I can have my thrills and kicks. So I do appreciate y'all taking the time to table those things or whatever you're going to do to find out what else is out here, what can we do as far as city hall goes? That is a building that's beautiful, reminds me of Night Court, but is it right for us? I don't know. Find out, there's experts out here that do know this type of stuff. And it's not up, I guess, to, to people who you know it benefits to tell you if it's good or not. I guess when we listen to Shelby Fair and, and Adam, you asked an honest question of that, and you know the answer you were going to get, it wasn't going to be anything different than, yeah, this isn't political. And maybe she's telling the truth, we don't know. So get outside entities. I guess even like with the, with the city attorney, you know, and his opinion, it's flip-flopped in multiple different scenarios. Like we don't have an outside entity to tell us if what we're getting is foobar or not. If any of you guys know what foobar means, try not to cuss. Outside of that, what I really came up here to say is number 20, Shelby Fair, or Shelby, excuse me, Samantha Harkins being named to the Port, Park Board, the Potter's Park Board, should tell you why we need to change the city charter. I mean, this, this, I think what you all could do and should do is ask who all the applicants were before you just appoint her. Again, not anything bad about her, although there's lots of it, just do your due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Tiersten Walters and then Erica Lynn.
Good evening, everybody. I'll try and make it quick because I know it's a little late here, but I'm the vice chair of the Neighborhood Advisory Board, and I just wanted to point out to everybody that the deadline for grants is March 8th. So I know it's been posted on the, the city's social media, but if you could get out, let neighborhood groups know that the deadline's March 8th, I'd love to see projects citywide. I know some wards get a little more involvement and attention than others, so I'd love to see a citywide effort to, to get grant funding out, so thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Erica Lynn.
Hello, Erica Lynn, lifelong Lansing resident. I wanted to talk about, first of all, I'm really appreciative that the items G and H were tabled tonight. Those were the resolutions concerning the state grant, you know, allocation, et cetera, and all the conversations surrounding that. Reason being is I think it absolutely should have been tabled, and I understand that you all are probably under a lot of pressure from different sectors, different people, all, you know, kind of looking at it, I guess in a one-dimensional way, like, you know, it was spoken on, why wouldn't you want to take this? People panic a little bit thinking we're going to lose this funding, we're going to lose this money. And I just want to acknowledge that I've seen over the course of the last few years of coming here, that that tactic is used often with city council, where you're put in a position where things feel very rushed and chaotic and you feel very pressured because things are thrown in your lap, all bundled in, and it's just a really disingenuous way to present things. So I wanted to acknowledge a couple of things that happened tonight that were really disturbing. First thing I wanted to say is the, the way that, you know, I look at the, the arms of the government, you know, of you all, the executive branch, the administrative branch, it should, you should be operating in good faith. If we are watching you all operate in good faith, that means that the resolution that comes before you, it doesn't bundle that. The grant acceptance should not have been bundled in with the plans. Those could have been two separate resolutions for you to vote on. We should never be tying in what the wants are of, of the administration into whether or not we actually bundle that. And so when the conversation came up and, and the city attorney is speaking on this and giving the opinion, we all know what that opinion is going to look like, what it's going to sound like. It's going to say, we need to do this. It's an up or down. We've seen this happen over and over and over, where you're put in a position to say up or down, and then there's a fear of losing funding, but I'm here to tell you that's just simply not true. There's a reason why there's no verbiage in the grant agreement that acknowledges that you have to do this. It's very general, that was spoken on, it's very boilerplate. That's because it's public funds. They can't tell you specifically who you're going to give it to. So they can't tell you, you need to agree to this to give it to these developers for whatever reasons that you're going to. They can tell you the realm of the way that you can use it. And so the fact that there wasn't a transparent process to figure out who we were going to get to use these fundings, that's extremely disingenuous. And it tells me that yet again, it was spoken on, it's not lost on me, that it was kind of jabbed at council member cost that this is a strong mayor, you know, situation, and it's not in the charter. And I think that you're seeing a lot of the reasons why the city charter was opened up for revision, because we again tonight saw it misused and abused in a way that's very insidious to say, well, it's not in there that says you can or can't. So look up the cases that Councilman Cost brought up. They're very factual, they're very true, and just because it doesn't explicitly say you can or can't in a charter does not mean that that is, is word is bond.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was not given a yellow sheet.
You, you had the opportunity to sign up, so.
I, I was not given one, and I told them what I wanted and they did not give me a yellow one.
You, you, you may speak.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so first of all, the website is so busy, is so huge, so mammoth, and so inaccessible that I had to call the assessor's office three times to find out how I could find out what the comparables are for my unit. And I still have to call them back tomorrow because every time they gave me a particular website, it got me to how, how to apply for a fire permit. I'm not going to do any fires at my home. I live in a condo and the whole place would go up in a minute. So that's really not very transparent, it's not very accessible. I pity anybody with a flip phone. Secondly, Ms. O'Leary, what she told you at the last meeting, that was not my experience with the HRCS. I called about how to get appointed to the two vacant meetings that it says right on the website, that there are two vacant seats on the Lansing Police Department Commission. And it came up at the meeting, the legitimate members who have been appointed to the Lansing Police Department Commission said, "We don't even know what a, what a majority is now because we're too short." So how come? Because when I called up, they said, well, it's a volunteer, you know, I knew it was a volunteer position, perfectly willing to be a volunteer on that commission. So I called up and they said, "Well, Ms. O'Leary," or they didn't say her by name, but it was the lady in charge of that is out of town, "so you have to fill out an employment." So I spent five hours filling out an employment application, and then before she came back, they said, "Well, I found out that they really have to be filled out for a paid position." So, I mean, it's not a paid position, so we shredded it, shredded five hours of my work. That's how uninformed people are. And then there's a loophole in how tenants, how major builders and developers like the I brothers, for example, is just one example, they build into the, the lease agreements that the tenant will pay for the needed maintenance on the building and grounds. Well, guess how many tenants who are desperate for a place to live? Don't read the fine print. That should be a requirement. There's, there's love, any number of benign landlords who only own four or five units that stay there because they build the, the cost of, expected cost of building and grounds maintenance into the lease payment. So I think that we should change that. I think there's a lot of things we should change. We need to make the city website much more accessible to the average citizen. And I also want to say yes to the Public Safety Committee because, okay, while they...
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
It's okay if I come back in here.